Salam alekum wa rahmatullahi taala wa barakatuh Um, Mr. President and his great senior zonal coordinator, my fellow Esco, and ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. I'm here to stand up, to say, to express my views. My name is Awashewu as Zampar State Coordinator. I'm here and glad to welcome our humble presidential aspirant, our aspirant, Mr. Omolee Sorri, and everybody in Zampar State. Your visit to Zampar State is something that we have been waiting for since we are for Sorri and Sorri is for us. We can't wait to take Nigeria to Nigeria and also to take Nigeria back to the right position that we had been lost through this movement, Mean Take It Back Movement. We had so many opportunities and movements that were across the state through this movement, also and likewise Take It Back Movement. Also, although we had an, we have an experience to face and challenges other parties as we all. Zampar State people believe that Take It Back Movement will give positive change to Nigeria, most especially and insecurities that we have faced in Zampar State and also nationwide in general. To provide jobs creation for youth to help farmers, hard men to help and to get peace and unity. Through our, through our opportunities is to synthesize voters before other parties. And I left 562 women to have their registration on PBC, that's Feminine Voters Card. And also, all of them are under this movement, Take It Back Movement. And they promised they will come and end to this present government to make sure our humble presidential aspirant, Mr. Sorri, will take over the country. And about our challenges that we have posed our office is just to financial issues. Thank God, we almost cover all these implications that we have faced. Mobility, how to mobilize the people, lack of vehicles so that we can, we can easily go through our bridges. Materials, parcels, sheds, cars and others are materials. Logistics government and other places we have had used, that's at the end of your visiting. So, I hope, Mr. President, as I feel happy here, I hope your mind should be cleared like what my heart is now. Thank for your visitor and I hope this visit will take Nigeria and Zampar State in success way.
Thank you very much, comrades, Awashewu, that's it, zonal coordinator, thank you very much, comrades. Please, we would like to adjust people standing so that at least we have the important views from the excellency sitting to reach the people's back. I would like to call the state coordinator, Comrade Jamilo Mjika, to have place five minutes pitch. You are welcome, Mr. Jamilo. He is zonal coordinator, I said zonal coordinator.
Take it back, take it back, take it back, take it back! You are welcome to this occasion. My name is Comrade Jamilo Mjika. I'm a bona fide citizen of Gousaw Local Government in Zampar State. So, I am the zonal coordinator in this movement that comprise so-called Zampara, Kanu, Kadinah and Digawa states respectively. So, I stand here before you this afternoon to give you at least short history and the aims of Take It Back Movement. This Take It Back Movement that most of you have heard of it long time ago. As you can witness in our knees here is our able, respected, responsible, strong la, hos la who can struggle for our rights. He is a philanthropist, he is a comrade, he is a person who can fight for our rights. He is a person who knows our rights and he is the only person who knows what is right for our youth. So, I'm urging from our youth to vote for Sorri comes general election in 2019. So, Take It Back Movement means we have to take back our country to its normal state. This is not the country that is left by our forefathers like Sedona. They left our country in harmony, in a set of peace, unity, no disparity. But today, our country have turned into the negative direction. So, I believe that Sorri can take back our country to its normal state of unity, peace and harmony. So, also Take It Back Movement have started in Nigeria a long time ago. It reached us here in Zampar State not at this time but in a few time ago. We are trying to see that our youth have knows their rights. They know what is, what is important, what is most important to do with their PVC. Already there is a plan that we are on to whereby we used to take our youth who doesn't have that PVC to obtain their own PVC. That PVC, that is the only weapon that we can use to change Nigeria. If we don't have that PVC, there is no, no way that we can change this country. We can't take it back without PVC. So, I'm calling on our colleagues to please, let's have our PVC. Let me give you brief history of our comrades. Omoele Sorri was born at Ondo State. His education was in Ondo State. Likewise, he obtained his degree in Lagos State University. University of Lagos, I mean, Unila, sorry. So, when he was at Lagos, University of Lagos, he was ex-SUG president. In the history of Sorri, likewise, he is the founder of Sahara TV. Everybody knows what Sahara TV is and the role that Sahara TV is playing in Nigeria. So, Sahara TV belongs to Omoele Sorri and our presidential aspirant comes 2019. We hope we use our PVC to crush these people out so that we can have a youth government that will fight for our rights, a youth government that knows who youths are, a youth government who knows what is supposed to be done with Nigeria. So, I'm very grateful for your time and as well I'm, I'm using this opportunity to welcome our president to Zampar State. This is Zampar State, sir, and Zampar State belongs to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jonathan, for the person of Jamilo Mjika. Thank you very much, Comrade Jamilo, our next open president. You are welcome. I would like to use this opportunity to call on our traditional singer here to have some few minutes for this play for our next president, Nekhavat Nenabuta, please, thank you very much.
Bishanallah, kalla Allah, tabarak Allah, wa mukhobare shikata, pataka, hadaka wa. Wa sojia ne, ne, horeki, menabu tamata sa, enna, jaydeya, hadde, doppo, bina, yendu, a, isu, ke, malon, menabu, talabana, ka, wa, kadi. Mi, ke, a, a, ki, a, a, ga, su, er, ma, ma, kende, ne, yo, gom, ma, ne, ne, bu, tamata sa, enna, ho, pugela, to, alla, ya, tem, ke, mo, sun, de, de, ti, to, ma, le, ne, bu, ta, ki, ke, ya, ru, de, sa, kwa, ne, to, ya, wa, ha, sa, lo, ta, sa, na, ta, la, ke, la, ki, to, alla, ha, ba, de, u, du, wa, la, 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 sa, lo, ne, ne, bu, ta, ke, la, ne, bu, ta, ke, la, ne, ma, su, kwa, sa, na, ga, da, a, la, ke, de, mu, sa, na, ga, pa, la, ke, ti, ya, ya, fa, ba, ka, na, ne, bu, ta, ke, ki, aman, de, ya, ba, de, ya, ki. So, why your life is destined to go to school and die in Gasswa, their own children are destined to go to school in London or live in Dubai? We are saying that all of you are entitled to go to school wherever you want as well. Whether it is in Gasswa, where you decide to stay here or in Lagos or London or anywhere in the world. Every Nigerian will have the same access and opportunity without little hindrance. But most importantly, Nigerians deserve security. We must stop the bloodletting that has killed so many innocent people in this country. In Zampar, we cannot continue to use the blood of the innocents to water the ground. That is why as I'm standing in front of you today, I promise to end the bloodletting first day as soon as we come into office by ensuring we rejig the security apparatus in this country.
May their souls continue to
Amen.
To make their killers.
Amen.
I want to thank the organizers of this event. Uh, I am very, very happy to be in Zanzarastate. I'm happy for See, I was born at the end of Nigeria, in the south. I was born in the end of Nigeria, in the southwest and the south, you know, those states. And today, I'm in the end of Nigeria, on the northwest. And I'm at home with you. Another thing I'm very happy about uh, is that they have divided us, the young people, for too long. They have divided us along religious lines, divided us along ethnic lines. They have made us to hate ourselves. But today, we have been able to break that barrier. That one of us, a young person, is accepted in his hometown as much as is accepted here, in another hometown, in Gusao. When we were to come here, they discouraged us, "Don't go to Zanzarar." They don't want you there. They don't like you there. I told them that if they can like me in America, they could be able to like me in Zanzarastate. And when I got here, I've seen better love. Let me tell you, this is our own country now. Let me tell you, this is our own future now. Let me tell you, your own brothers and sisters. Yes, and you should feel free to be anywhere you want in Nigeria, anytime, any day. Yes. That is why what we are doing now is compulsory now, now. Because I want to have a house in Gusao. I wanted to be able to have a house in those states. I don't want anybody to look at you and ask you because of your face that you are not part of us. Or because of your way of dressing, they don't respect you. We are all one. The hunger that is ravaging this country doesn't know how Saman, it doesn't know Yoruba man. The unemployment that is indeed that is affecting our youth doesn't respect full of need or evil man. The lack of opportunities and poverty that is ravaging this land doesn't respect anybody's religion. So I have come to you, I have come to you fearlessly today that they have divided us for too long because it is in their interest to divide us. If not, if you look at the leaders at the top, they don't have religion, they don't have ethnicity. When it is time to steal and share Nigeria's money, they don't have any division, they don't have any differences. When they come to, went to share money at the senate, the senator Marafa is not different from Saraki. When it is time to share Nigeria's money, Sani Yerima is not different from Ibori. And I'm saying it in Zanzarar today, I am not afraid of any one of them. Because we have been afraid of them for too long. And when they steal, they give us little, little cobot to be doing talks for them. So we are bringing the point now, we are withdrawing our services from all the thieves. We want to make our country work for us, young people. Now I don't care whether you live in Gusao or you live in Naidawa in Kano or you live in Rumuroko in Motakos, or whether you live in Asaba, or you live in Akure, or you live in Edo, in Lagos. All of us must take our country back now, now. You see, next year, I want to be able to come to Zanzarastate where nobody will get killed for no reason. You know, when somebody gets, when somebody gets killed in the south, it's big deal because we have a lot of media to report and blow it out of, uh, 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 slow it out. But when people get killed in Zanzarar, nobody cares about it because there's no media that is interested in reporting about Zanzarar. But if we can make Nigeria a great country, everybody, every life Nigeria, we have value. And not let anybody deceive you, we cannot have unity in Nigeria without justice. And we cannot have justice without taking care of young people who form seventy percent of our population. I have said it, with these people that are running our country today, they will give you no school here. I came all the way from Kano by road. I didn't see no good schools on the road. When they give you schools, they give you schools that they want you to go to. But when they want to give their children school, they give their children the schools that the children want to go to. So while your life is destined to go to school and die in Gasswa, their own children are destined to go to school in London, are going to live in Dubai. We are saying that all of you are entitled to go to school wherever you want as well. Whether it is in Gasswa, where you decide to stay, to stay here, or in Lagos, or London, or anywhere in the world. Every Nigerian will have the same access and opportunity without little hindrance. But most importantly, Nigerians deserve security. We must stop the bloodletting that has killed so many innocent people in this country. In Zanzarar, we cannot continue to use the blood of the innocents to water the ground. That is why, as I'm standing in front of you today, I promise to end the bloodletting first day, as soon as we come into office, by ensuring we rejig the security apparatus in this country. There is no reason we can find thirty thousand policemen to go and rig the election in Ekiti and we cannot find twenty thousand policemen to protect the people of Zanzarar. I will also promise you that we will have twenty-four hours electricity here for this part of the world. I saw a lot of agriculture when I was coming here. People are planting. That means Nigeria can feed itself. We will support agriculture to the fullest by making sure that loans are available, essential services are available, and that governments mechanize agriculture properly, in such a way that Nigeria can feed itself and feed most of Africa. For every young person in this country and in this part of the world, education is key for us. There is no reason why Zanzarar should not have over twenty thousand young people writing WAEK every year, as opposed to twenty-four, that we hear about entering university per year. The only way we can have you compete with others around the country and around the world is to give you free qualitative education in this part of the world. Without saying too much, now, because we came in late and I have to apologize that we came in late, you know, the roads are bad. And because we don't have money, so that we are stolen to take private jet and aircraft, we will do Yes, yes. And in driving down from Kano, we understood your problems even better. And we understood your potential as even better stronger. And we can tell you, you must demand of anybody who wants to be leader of Nigeria, president of Nigeria, they must drive from Kano to Let's see if Uhari can drive from Kano to, uh, Gusao. Let's see if a people can drive from Kano to Gusao. Anybody that don't understand your problem can never solve your problem for you. In fact, they don't understand our problem because they are our problem. So, what I would say to you is that I thank you so much once again for welcoming me to do We are going to have a lovely country from next year if we vote for the right candidate. I know that, uh, that medicine, APC, is about to expire. Yes. And I know that PDP is no longer going to win elections. We are coming with a brand new party that will make this country fantastic and great country. And at the end, you will thank, you will thank yourselves that you are part of history today, the history-making event here today in this hall. Where you have met one of your brothers, who you can call the real Megaskia. Some people have presented themselves as Megaskia in the past, but I hear that they are not picking. Some of them have come here to promise heaven and earth, but we know that they are Barawu Banza. Coming from Abuja, I saw one of them when he see the way we were talking, and I thought I was going to the north. He called somebody aside. He said, "This guy, the way he is, he is talking", he say, "We", he was referring to them politician, he himself, he said, "Nashiga Uku". I told him, I said, "No, it's not Nashiga Uku", he said, "Nashiga Uku", Because they said to me that when you hear the truth, you stand by the truth in this part of the world. Nobody can scare you in this part of the world, in Arevala. We must make a decision today, yes. We must make a decision today that we are moving out of poverty in Arevala. We are making a decision today that we are moving out of darkness in Arevala. We are making a decision that we are moving out of lack of education in Arevala. We are making a decision that we are moving out of sickness in Arevala. And we are making a decision to retire all the old politicians that have been using us to do business. And we are joining hands together as young people. To hold ourselves a fantastic country that will start from February next year when we do elections. And me, a young man, when I entered Gusao today, it took people a long time to discover who I was, because they said, "This guy is too young", We are used to all those old people with walking stick. It's over for them, let them go back home. Let them go and take care of their grandchildren. Let them go and take care of their grandchildren, so that we can have children. Let them go and take care of their cows, so that we can have prosperity. Let them go and take care of their health, so that we can have a country. Let them go and take care of their laziness. So that we can have prosperity. You remember they call Nigerian youth lazy, right? So thank you so much for doing I will, uh, take questions from you, a few questions. Before I leave, I'll just say you are welcome to the future.
Hello, this is what we are playing now. Excuse me, please, please, please. Let's have a seat, please. There is a song that's playing now presently. There is a band here that will sing the song. I would like to give a short review of which are these songs. But, uh, next to the band, we are in the area, please sit down, please.
My name is Mr. Hidir Bryant. I am, uh,
Hey, hey!
Thank you very much, thank you very much, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Let's have a seat, please. Without much more time, you know, our great leader, Mr. Wunle Asho, will deliver his speech. And he met us, he is expecting questions from you. And because I would like to call, I would like to call the bar of Danguebe, if it's around, please. The bar of Danguebe. Mr. Mubareh Danguebe. Mubareh Danguebe, if it's around, please. Mubareh Danguebe. Please, I would like to call Comrade Aminu Mohammed, to have his question. Aminu Mohammed. Aminu Mohammed. I would like to call the second floor of Blue Drift Movement, a person of Nura Garba, to have his question to me, and to the floor up there.
Hello. Nigeria for sorry. Nigeria for sorry. Nigeria for sorry. Nigeria for sorry. Thank you, Ba. Thank you, Ba. Thank you, Ba. Mister, the 17th, the 18th, and 19th, our President, you are welcome to Zanzarastate. My name is Comrade Nura Garba. I know all of you, both of the people of Nokki. Without much, much of time, Mr. President, in future, I would like to give you a sensitive and barbaric question, which will be very good to our youth in Zanzarastate. Mr. President, I believe in the 2019, you will be afforded by God, please. In Zanzarastate, we are experiencing many challenges. From the youth, our old age, and our, to our, our brothers and sisters in the future. How you will tackle the issue of poverty in Zanzarastate first? In Nigeria, we are facing some economic challenges. How you will handle the challenges economically in Nigeria? After that, we, I, before I throw this question to you, sir, I would like to say something I studied in Oveste, Abeputa, Kessen University, Abeputa. We are liking the issue of tribalism. This is outside, this is import, this is yellow, but to me, Nigeria is one. That, that's why we support sorry. How you will handle this issue, sir? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your questions. I will start with the last question of tribalism. Tribalism was introduced in Nigeria by selfish politicians to confuse the mind of people, to make them think that if you belong to one tribe, you will be superior to the other. As a result, if you look at Nigeria today, they use tribalism to deceive us when somebody who is president, is outsider, Yoruba, and Igbo, and Igsho, and Igibios, will be told that, "Oh, the outsider man" Everything from us to the outsider man. Of course, they don't come to outsider man to go and see poverty in outsider land. If they come here, they will apologize to outsider man. In the same confusion, they create here. They say, "Oh, if you don't vote for us, the South donors or Yoruba man will come and take your resources away." So where are we in Nigeria today since 2019? I'm sorry, since 1999? Nigeria has voted for Yoruba man. What did you do for Yoruba nation? They vote for Yoruba man. What did you do for Yoruba nation? They vote for Yaradua, from Cassina. What did you do for Cassina people? We vote for Uhari from Cassina. The road to Cassina is as bad as the road to my village. Have you heard about the drug epidemic that is in the north? People who are hooked on drugs. The worst place that is happening is in Doura by Uhari. So we are deceiving ourselves, and they deceive us with ethnicity, because it works for them. But I have said before, when they want to share Nigeria's money that they are stealing, they don't remember where they come from. They don't say whether they are outsider, Yoruba, or Igbo. They share the money and they disappear. I will give you an example, because I am a journalist. Most of you know I work with Sahara reporters, right? So one day, I found out that your governor here, foreign governor, he buy a house in America. So one day, I found out that your governor here, foreign governor, he buy house in America. I asked myself, why didn't the governor build a house here in Zanbar? Why didn't they build schools here in Zanbar? Is America his ethnic group? America that not even believe in what you believe in, you go and buy house in America. And when you cannot pay worker salary, you start blaming ethnicity. When you cannot build hospital, you start blaming religion. Please, the brothers and sisters, let us work together to make this country a great country. You can live wherever you want in Nigeria. You can marry whoever you want to marry in Nigeria. But I noticed you here, you like Lagos girl. If you do not have money, don't try Lagos girl, so. This country can be a fantastic country if we forget about the ethnicity, religion, and all those things that divide us. Your ask are going to the issue of security in Zanbar. Like I have said, I'm also a journalist and I studied what is happening here in Zanbar for a long time. It boils down to our government, everything after Abuja, they don't care about you. Because all these people that are killing in Zanbar, they are not good. So we just need to deploy our forces to try them and show that before they kill, we are able to stop the killings. But for somebody to stop someone from killing you, he must care about you first. The truth is that our leaders don't care about us. Otherwise, there will be enough policemen, enough soldiers, enough civil defense in this country to protect the people of Zanbar, and that's what I will do when I become president. No body in this Zanbar, under my presidency, will ever cry over a dead president. People who are killing will be put out of business, that's all I will tell you and I know how to do it. Ah, the third question you asked, or the third question, remind me again. Economy, and you asked to remind me, so that I answer your questions appropriately. Our economy, our economy doesn't have any basis for existence. The reason is simple. For you to have an economy, you must have electricity. For you to have economy, you must have infrastructure, road infrastructure, train, I mean rail infrastructure, and all other infrastructure that makes an economy work. For you to have economy, you must have manpower, and well trained, and to make the economy work. For you to have economy, you must have young people who are going to school, who will keep the economy running. And for you to have economy, you must have people who understand economics. So you cannot have a minister of finance that forged her NYC certificate. To have, for you to have economy, you must have workers who are paid well. If you go to Google, you look at the minimum wage of workers around the world. In countries like Togo, Obenere Republic, and Ghana, they pay the minimum wage, 7,000 naira per month. Big Brother Nigeria, Shameless Nigeria, paying 2,000 naira per month. Big for nothing Nigeria, doesn't pay minimum wage. Big for nothing TV governors, they not pay no salaries every month. So how do you expect to have economy when somebody has not collected his salary for seven months? Those who are collecting 1.2 billion naira as security vote. I always hear that some of the APC governors only come to their state to spend their vacation, instead of family in Abuja. What I'm saying in a nutshell, brother, is that any economy that cannot produce, will perish. We will bring about a productive economy, an economy that encourages production, an economy that brings about respect for labor, an economy that produces jobs. That is why we say that in northern part of Nigeria, we will bring solar energy, and provide jobs for young people, 4,000 five hundred naira per month. And I'm glad that already you guys are getting prepared, because we now have a senatorial. We will finally not have senators who go to the senate to watch dance. And I have seen a very responsible guy, I can see here. I have said, regardless, I mentioned something in Kano, three years ago. Now, I feel like our Nigerian senate is useless. And that, if I have my way, I want to repeat it again, if I have my way, I will propose that we appropriate a scrap to Nigerian senate. I'm just not proud that we have a senate in which people will still as governors, and then go and become senators, and do nothing for a whole year. So I will ensure that this country works for Nigerian people, and we have an economy that is protected by Nigerian people. Thank you very much for your question.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, I would like to open up the meeting to call our favorite aspirant, to have a word with somebody please. Follow up with class.
Take it back. Take it back. Take it back. Nigeria. Nigeria. Zanparis Central Zone. Zanparis Central Zone. Assalamualaikum. That be to Allah, that no post, see this day at this time. That God bring our fellow, our 2019 presidential candidate, Mustaherul Norgom Baba. Other special people surround him, you are highly welcome sir, to the Paristate.
This calling, take it back, for people of our nation. Nigeria, especially our youth, our generation, should do that and honesty. After that, my name is Honorable Abdu Sholz Baba, the senatorial candidate of the Paristate Central Zone. Sir, I hope that you have seen my words of God. Mustaherul Norgom Baba. I want to ensure you that, I myself, have a lot of support in this state, the Paristate, and all the youth are with me. Because of my hard working on their activities, I can also present a number of communication. For many a, and am dearly wish you therefore, I assure you that, we are given a miserable, poverty, and poor supporting you. And God through the Paristate, you are sir, and with you, my prayers and my prayers and all this, to adversity, our vision, take it back, with all that by good will. And myself, the senatorial candidate, Senator of the Paristate, have a full insurance, that the boy will win the 2019 election by the best of God. You will bring, you will bring a great job to the youth and the insensitivity in our belonging, state internally, in, in generally, therefore, with a full supporting sir. Sir, our coffee president 2019, Mustaherul Norgom Baba, have some advantages that will take us to successfully mission. Firstly, in this our 2019 mission, I will hope have as I did, brothers, to help our youth and life, which small business, scale, that will help them defend on that. Same and also, there are many youth who want to go to school, but don't have the restoration fee, but I will walk that inside law. So go see, as we are watching, and there are many youth that are grateful without job, I can join you sir, I will try my best, eat that chocolate, by the rest of God. Lastly, must have heard in 2019, that the loss of God, after having the 2019 election, this and this sir, the Paristate will have been created, creation to insecurity in the state, and our youth are in trouble for this. This and this sir, look at our sporting in you, must have heard in 2019, you shall run, our youth are in process of, the most of God. The Paristate, I talk in God, and wishing you all the best, you are our Pope.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. We have no applause please for our aspirants. Applause for him, Allah, but Allah, Allah. We have not too much time, we don't have much time, please, I would like to call on the representative, who is minister for the House of Wealth, Yousouk Afi, Honorable Abdul Hamid.
Nigeria. Nigeria. Say Abdul Hamid. Yousouk Afi. He was yes of my, thank you Allah. Ah, who is the greatest, a greatest opportunity to attain, just get occasion.
May God bless you, ah, your excellency, national candidate, Yousouk Afi, ah, to take this time out of your time, to do, to participate, in the Paristate program, to take it back, please. My name is Avra. My name is Avra Hana Madi, as you all know, as I tell you now, and I, as far as, I want to go to West, those are, those are the people that are sitting in this, that are sitting in this, in the, in the, in the House of Wealth, that will not exactly know what they are doing, and that's that, that will not know what, so I want to go on, to let us see, to go back, and let us work, let us work, let us work, what is what to do. Ah, I want to give this opportunity, to start work of, the committee of Yousouk Afi, who are hard working, and also, I want to, I want to also give you an opportunity, to also, thank, ah, my colleagues, that are here, you are hard work sir, you are hard work sir, thank you very much, you are very beautiful.
Thank you very much, our Honorable Abdul Hamid, who is a star of the results, Afi, 2019, who has switched on with Allah, House of Wealth, Awi, thank you very much. Please, without wasting much time, I would like to use this opportunity to call on the romance leader, though she is around, please, Maryam Sulaiman, to come over to have a word, please, Maryam Sulaiman. Maryam Sulaiman, is she around? Please, will you come over to have a word, please, is she around? Maryam Sulaiman, is she around? Though she is not around, I would like to call the Yoruba ethnic group, to have their cultural dance, without wasting much time, please, move back and support, to come over, please, please, let's go, let's go back, to the house. Welcome.
Thank you so much. I am very thankful to have this opportunity, to accept the fact of my presence, the presence sir, I hear you sir, and my name, Comrade, is mine, and I still enough to be so confident, we are first.
We are facing much challenge, and I'm, I thank God, and I thank you so much for having this great opportunity to perform in front of you. Giving you my word today, I myself, the brother that I'm following, on the northern side entirely. The NAF's vice president is my senior brother, and I'm giving you my advice. I'm giving you my word today that we have the own support of the student that is the north side. Northern side will support you, that is thanks to God, my president, 2019. Papa, you, you do what you, Papa, you do what you, Papa, you do what you, you be with the copper. Papa, you, I see what you know, oh, Lord, you know, Lord, you know. Let's take it, hello, my Lord, hello. Let's take it, hello, my Lord, hello, my Lord. Hello, my Lord. Sure, it's, hello, my Lord. Hello, my Lord. Hello, my Lord. Sure, it's, hello, my Lord. Hello, my Lord. You are, you are, my Lord. Hello, my Lord. You are, my Lord. Allah, you know, lover, Allah, you know, lover. Allah, you know, lover, Allah, you know, lover. God, you want to do. Allah, you know, lover. Allah, you know, lover. I keep, I keep, Allah, you know, lover. Papa, you do what you do. Papa, you do what you do. Uh, and then, I go, say, Papa. Say, Papa, say, Papa. Say, Papa, say, Papa. Let's take it, then. Say, Papa, say, Papa. Say, Papa, say, Papa. Say, Papa, say, Papa. Thank you so much, thank you so much, thank you so much. Thank you very much. Please, a lot of applause. Everybody, thank you very much. We appreciate. Mr. Omer, His Excellency, is appreciating your efforts. I is highly glad for meeting your people at this time. I would like to use this opportunity, once again, that the woman leader, in person of Maryam Suleiman is back. I would like to use this time to call her, to have a word, please. Maryam Suleiman, please come over.
The most beneficent, the most merciful, all praise be to Allah, to show what is. May the blessing of Allah be upon our blessed Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. His family, companions, and those who serve Jesus. Our national ambition, to our great husband, His Excellency, Honorable, Sir, President, for his presidential running in 2019. To take it back, not to run it back to him. Because he is, he is, he is, he is mighty, lovely. Hopefully, we are praying to Almighty Allah to take this back. And honestly, because this is a battle for him. We are praying to Almighty Allah, help us win this battle, isha Allah. Thank you, you are welcome.
Thank you very much, Maryam Suleiman. We are highly glad. Thank you very much. His Excellency is highly grateful once again. I would like to use this time, without much time, since we don't have time on us. The time has already run out. I would like to use this opportunity to call again our MC, and to have a national anthem after that. We will call on Malam to have a closing prayer, since I have so much time. Without much time, I will call the MC, because six o'clock is our coffee on bike. Back to normal, you know, when is a six o'clock? So without time, we want to run it, our MC. Please, everybody should stand up for our national anthem, let's respect this great man and our great country once again. Please, our MC, please, a national anthem, for us, please. Please, let's respect our country. Oh, this is. Thank you very much. I would like to talk, on, I am not sure, company to have a great, great prayer. Thank you. Please, no time to pray, to pray, to pray.